I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. The only one absent, I think, is David. Am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Have a motion. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the September meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Any opposition? Next on the agenda is a public hearing for, I'm not sure, is that just an acronym that they use for?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know how to pronounce it, so I don't know if there is a pronunciation.
Amberbev.
Okay, Amberbev, okay. Has applied for a variance for signage in the IBD Industrial Business Development Zone on attractive land containing 2.65 acres located at 522 Techwood Drive, Danville. And Ms. Fairchild is going to recuse herself from this case, and she's a neighbor of the petitioning party. Would you come to the podium and, or you want to go first? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Couple of small things. Appreciate that. The applicant is here. Going to do something a little different today. We've got some things on the agenda. Got the PowerPoint up on the screen, but everything in that that's up on the screen for these two staff reports is in your packet. That's more for the folks in the crowd, number one. But there is a map that will be unique that we'll get to on this case that will be on the screen, and I'll point that out. So I'll be working through your staff reports that you have in front of you and just sort of working through the pages that are laying right in front of your chairs right there, so you guys won't have to bend your neck around unless you just want to see some of that. You've got that at your desk there. So I'll get started, and again, applicant will have to jump in here. This is a unique variance case, and he'll probably want to give you some detail on that. To start with, we had the application filed September 27, 2017, for this public hearing date. The applicant, you've already heard, is Amberbev. The location is 522 Techwood Drive. It's currently zoned Industrial Business Development, or IBD as we call it. Property's 2.65 acres, and its existing zoning, existing land uses, is commercial vacant, building under construction, et cetera. And again, you see on your staff report, property has frontage on Techwood. That map, page two, is up on the screen, is in your packet, I think shows an accurate way the parcel lies in relationship to Techwood on that cul-de-sac. And again, you see their frontage is just a little bit of that frontage on the cul-de-sac. The building orientation would be towards Techwood, and the rear of the building would obviously be towards the bypass. The variance request is at the bottom of page one, but I'll get into that a little more detail in a second. Page two of your staff report is where we break down the zoning references specific to this case, and there's a couple of them, I think, here. Basically, what we're dealing with is a signage issue in the Industrial Business District. This is where the case gets a little confusing. We have wall signage requirements in Danville, Boyle County, and depending what zoning district you're in, the wall signs, they change a little bit. So if you're zoned commercial, or HC, it's a little different than if you're zoned Industrial Business District. So this wall signage is actually in this section 1317.1, and I'm just going to read some of that. It says, "Wall sign should not exceed 64 square feet or 5% of the wall area which is attached to whatever is greater." So what that means is that 64 or 5% whatever's greater. So the way you figure that is you look at the building height, length, times it, come up with the square footage, and you get that much wall sign, which is 5% or 64 square foot whatever's greater. So one of these variance requests is of that style. The other one just simply relates to the number of signs. It says that this maximum may be exceeded within the maximum dimensions if the sign does not exceed 5% exposed building face. But a big issue here, and is kind of a problem when you look at different zoning districts, it says, "No more than one such sign may be mounted to a building's side." So I'm going to stop right there real quick and talk about that. What Industrial District says is we can put one wall sign on each building's side. In the Commercial District, it's one wall sign on each building's side, but no more than two, unless you have a front facade that has multiple tenants, then you can have as many wall signs to suit all the tenants. So in a strip center situation, let's say a building is the exact same size, if it had multiple tenants in it, it could have 10 wall signs across the front, and then it could have wall signage on different sides, not to exceed two sides of those four sides. In Industrial District, it's one wall sign on every side. Very complicated here that we have kind of two different wall standards. And in this case, the front wall that you're going to see actually has two tenants in it. It's actually two different businesses will be in this building. But it still says in Industrial District, only one wall sign. It's not related to tenants like Commercial. So what you could have seen is, the applicant could have decided, well, let's zone it Commercial to give me more front wall signage, but then I get less sidewall signage. He's in Industrial Business District, it fits what the use is, but clearly, the wall signage standards on what I'll call comparable buildings in close proximity is totally different depending on what the zoning district is. Very confusing. But you've got to read this paragraph kind of over and over and over and realize what it says. It basically says, "Not to exceed 64 square feet or 5% whatever's greater, and not more than one sign shall be mounted to a building's side." So if you were staying 100% within the thresholds, you could do 5% on all four sides of that building and have a wall sign on four sides. And what this applicant's asking is for wall signage on the front, two, to deal with two tenants, and a wall signage on the back, it's kind of a corporate franchise style, to deal, again, with the tenants and the property use. So he's asking for signage on two. In addition, this applicant's not asking for any freestanding signage at all, or plans any freestanding signage. So freestanding signs are also another animal. So going back to the Commercial example, a business could have a pole sign, maybe a few pole signs, maybe several wall signs on the front, and possibly some on the side, and the building is the exact same size because it's zoned Industrial, basically it gets one, one, and one, and a pole sign. So there could be five signs on this site, in theory, and what we've got are two walls with signs.
If it were Commercial?
Well, in this case, in Industrial, he could have four wall signs and a pole sign.
Oh, if it were IBD.
And it is. If it's Commercial, it comes down to the tenants and some other issues. It's very confusing to communicate to folks on what the wall signage is, because you've got to flip the page and look residential, IBD, HC, NCC. It all has different standards depending on what zoning district you're in, yet it's all wall signage on comparable buildings, and sometimes those are in close proximity to themselves. And I'll show you that in just a second. So that's enough of that stuff right there. I'm going to go into the very bottom of page two, talks about what the applicant's actually asking for. I'm going to get into that a little more detail on page three. But first, if you turn to page three, KRS 100 241 tells us that you guys can put conditions on variance. I put that in the report just so you all know, even though this is a variance request, you guys always have the authority to impose conditions. KRS 100 243 is the findings necessary for us to grant a variance. That's housekeeping, you guys know that. But the bottom of page three is where we get into what the actual applicant is asking for, and I'll read this, some of this, so we go through this, and at the same time, I'm going to put the signs. This is the front of the building, and again, this is what's in your packet, so you guys can look at that page while I read what's on page three, or you can flip back and forth from your picture to this. So on page three, it says, "Front-facing signage." And again, this would be the front of the building facing Techwood or the cul-de-sac. It says, "This is the east side facade facing, fronting Techwood. The signage component on the left identifies the building location as the Danville KY Distillery of Amberbev LLC." So again, that's kind of that color logo on the left of the building. The signage component on the right, or north, identifies a separate business endeavor apart from the distillation, bottling, and warehousing located at this facility, namely the still at Amberbev. A retail sales and tavern space. And then both signage components that you see on the front of that building only make up 4.5%. So again, it's below the threshold of the 5%. What this variance request is for, number one, is going basically from one wall sign to two. And again, just the reason I went through all that stuff about Commercial, had this been zoned HC, you would get those two wall signs because you would have two tenants. But we don't allow the tenant space signs in the IBD District, which by the way, does allow retail, too. It's not all industrial, allows a lot of things in that. And so it's a little odd that our HC District and the IBD don't allow similar wall signage components. So again, we're under the 5%, the applicant's asking to go from one to two. That one's pretty straightforward. In your packet, you've got the side of the buildings. Again, those are just for decoration. Again, they're not planning any signage on sides or freestanding, and then the back of the building is really a big chunk of this variance request. And it says, "Rear-facing signage." Says, "This facade is situated a substantial distance from the bypass, approximately 50 feet above the highway." And I'm going to go back to a special map that's not in your packet, and that's right behind you guys. I like to think of myself as cutting-edge technology-wise, but believe it or not, we can't get to our digital zoning map and see a scanned view of zoning because it's a point-and-click address-based map. So I actually had to take a picture of this with my phone of the paper map oriented, I think, the best way for us to talk about, which is Techwood's at the bottom of the screen there, so we could see the different zoning districts in the region. You can see IBD, you can see IBD across the street, you can see HC. That's right, that's it right there.
That's where we're talking about.
That's exactly it. And you see other buildings already underground on the aerial, but you see it's HC across the corner to the north. That'd be south, my fault. I got the map oriented. The intersection of the next road up, 34 Levinon Road, you see it's HC across the street, other side. Yep. IBD on the three corners, HC on the other. Lots of big boxes, lots of big signage out there, everyone taking advantage of bypass view sheds, some freestanding signs, some wall signs. If you drove out there, there's a lot of different signs. This is the only way we can see our zoning map right now holistic like this without just zooming in and only seeing one zoning district label, so we're going to get that corrected. Thought that was important to just show you the relationship. Going back to the staff report, it says it's approximately 50 feet above the highway, so it sits up, as you guys know, and it's approximately 500 feet away from that roadway. The rear signage, again, I'm going to go to it on the screen, says, "The rear signage is going to be a fabricated silver tone, copper tone brushed aluminum. The signage will be illuminated by external spotlighting. The tallest lettering stands at 27 inches high. The signage obviously includes a logo in the center, which is Amberbev," again, the company. And then there's two trademarks of those other bottling distribution products that are in that. So you see those other two corporate logos. So when we measure signage, as you guys know, we draw boxes around logos and signs and whatnot. And then you see in the staff report, I gave you two numbers, because really, the signage is really, in my opinion, there's three things we read there very clearly. The other two are really corporate trademarks. So the numbers I put in the staff report that the applicant provided says that the three components cover 14.7% of that building. So again, the standard is 5%. If we're just counting the three readable signs there, that's a 9.7% variance request. If you guys are considering all that artwork signage, the way we box that, that's 16.3%. That would be a 16.3% variance, and that would cover up approximately 31% of that back wall. I know that's complicated. So again, the three signs cover up 14.7, if you count the three signs. That's a 9.7% variance over the five. If you count all that artwork, you're looking at 16.3%.
Okay, here's where I got confused.
Okay.
What, here's where, say that again. That's where I got confused.
Okay.
What is a signage and a logo?
Well, the logos are interesting, because the signage, the ordinance says a sign is basically the letters, what we read, if it's a painted sign, if it's a wall-mounted sign, that's artwork, in the applicant's view, and that's corporate trademark stuff. In the HC, we allow those things. We allow them as directional sometimes in the percentage, we allow them on the building. We don't count them all as signs if they're corporate logos. We count the letters. So you know, using examples, you know, Walmart had Walmart, we box the Walmart, we say, there's the percentage. But if Walmart has a big logo, that corporate logo or franchise logo, McDonald's is a good example, too, the big M, can be a sign, can be a corporate logo under our ordinance, but sometimes when it's just artwork that the company's assigned, I think it's your all's call. In my opinion, the three names, the three signs I see are three words, but if you want to count everything you see, then I can box one end, box the other end, and box the center, and it comes out to those percentages. So it's really, the variance request is either going to be, we're either covering up 16.3% of the wall or 31% of that wall, in your opinion. So it's a variance request of one or the other. That is artwork, especially more on the right, but I guess on the left, you see words, but that's the trademark of the company name that's right to the right of that. So again, we can count that as one sign. Middle's number two, and the end's number three. The other variance request is obviously going from one to three. That's what they're asking for. That's three signs, clearly. So.
One?
No. No, that'd be one altogether. If you're counting that, then you tie it in with the sign right beside it. You box it. You would go in, up, up, down. That's how you would do it. That's not how we calculate signs, a square. It follows.
I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to understand.
Okay. Well, I wish I had a pointer. So you would go, you can do it, you can go follow underneath, now go, no, no, then you'd go straight up as soon as you get to the.
No.
Just box the art. You could go, go over to about here and then go up.
That's right.
And then just box.
It's going to look like a T by the time you boxed it. That's how we do them. That's how the rules are. The other one would be the same way. We wouldn't, we don't count, and again, so let me explain this, this is going way too deep.
You don't count the space above and below.
No. Sometimes, sometimes. So if it's a canned sign, metal framed, we're going to put that dude on the wall.
Right.
Okay? And these are the letters. Then we count the box. But when their letters are fixed to a building or painted, then we box the letters because the wall doesn't count. That's what the ordinance says. That's typical. If that was a canned sign, again, if that was one big box that went up and stuck out with a frame, we count the frame. But in this case, we box the letters. That's the best way to explain it. And we calculate those percentages, and that's what they come out to be. So if you want to count everything you see that's not green or letters under it, this is where the 31% comes from. The other numbers, if you just count the art, don't count the artwork, regardless, we're going from one to three signs. Does that make sense? I think I just about muddied that up.
I understand.
So I'm going to keep rolling because applicant's here. So you've got three requests. One is front sign, one to two, back sign, percentage over the five, whichever number you're comfortable with, and the third one is going from one to three on the back. Again, we looked at this. It's complicated, but the ordinance is pretty clear on how we do this, and the variance request is, you know, a reasonable request to bring to you guys. The applicant has a business plan here, has a desire to advertise his business and the products he's bringing into this building as corporate logos, and again, we don't have any serious items of concern at all. We didn't hear any citizens call us or give us any feedback. Just had to get our heads around all these kind of measurement standards that we do. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. I've got that big zoning map on there, we can scroll back and forth to whatever you guys want to look at. And the applicant's here, and they maybe want to jump up here and just tell you about what they're about, or you guys may have questions for me or the applicant. We'll go wherever you all want us to go.
Let's hear from the applicant right now, and I'm sure we will have questions probably for both of you at some point. Who's representing? I'm going to need you to state your name.
Right. I'm Tom Baker. This is Zach Baker. He and I are the founding partners of Amberbev.
Okay, you'll need to raise your right hand, both of you, to use where and affirm the statement you're about to make or to correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Tell us about what you're doing and what you're wanting to do.
Okay. Well, I don't want to be, I don't want to go beyond the purpose of this meeting, which is basically signage, but in just a few sentences, Amberbev, by the way, if you can't pronounce Amberbev, you probably can't pronounce very many words at all on that sign.
You're right.
It's Espirito Cachasa and Boteco Vodka. And basically, up to this point, Amberbev has been an entity which imports Brazilian spirits, cachasa, and in this case, cane neutral spirits, from which we derive cane-based vodka, both from Brazil.
Amberbev being an amalgamation of American Brazilian beverage.
Right. So to make a long story short, we've been in operation for about four years, but much of our hands-on activity has been outsourced to Tennessee, where our bottling and warehousing has been done. Our progress has justified our bringing those functions in-house to Danville, and that's the purpose of this enterprise. In addition, we are initiating a distillation process, which will also be included in this building. Again, those details are probably not highly relevant to the issue at hand, but that gives you some background as to what we're doing. We were, have always been anxious to get our production to Danville because that's where we are, and we plan to stay for a long haul. Warehousing is a big part of this, that's why it looks like a warehouse. We thought long and hard about where we would locate this. You may know that I was previously in a separate business right next door to this location, and we found that area attractive, although with some concerns that our operation might be perceived as not fitting in to that area. We, of course, strongly disagree, but initiated at the outset our effort to construct a building that would truly be an attractive addition, not only to that neighborhood, but to, for the community at large, knowing that there was going to be some element of visibility from the highway. So this is a steel building, and we could have, I suppose, constructed it with steel siding all around. There are no, there's nothing to restrict us from doing that, and having no signage at all on it. But instead, it is, that green surface is all going to be drive-it surface on all surfaces, front, sides, and back, which is exactly the same stuff that surrounds the cancer center next door. Our effort was to really create an attractive building, and we set out to do so with that in mind when we designed the signage. I think, and I'll let Zach chime in here, anything beyond that that we need to bring to their attention before?
Well, I think he has summed it up quite well. I think the point that the two of us want to communicate most to you all is that we are keenly interested in being above board with our intentions and our plans, and that this is really an attempt to add to the aesthetics of the business community on Techwood Drive. And we think that we've done so, or what we were proposing represents something that is in no way offensive, and in fact, will enhance sort of the, again, overall aesthetics of the area.
So if I could add just a couple of points, when we put this together and decided that this was the facade that we wanted to present to the community on the bypass, we knew that we were going to potentially run into some signage conflicts. And to me, the issue is the 5% and the number of signs. We went through the 1804 ordinance, is that the number, 1804, I think it is here, in some detail, and the 5% number, you know, you have to really question, in my opinion, the legitimacy of a 5% number as it applies to all buildings, regardless of where they are vis-à-vis the roadways that they front. So our building is not only 500-plus feet from the edge of the highway, it's also raised four or five stories high above the highway. So we felt that 5% was, you know, something that limited us in a potentially unreasonable way just for that purpose. The second thing that I would mention is that, you know, there's some question about definitions. What is signage and what is artwork? And I just posed that not as a confrontational issue, but, you know, one which I think maybe does require a little bit of definition, because as Steve, as you might recall, Steve showed you one of our facades, the north facade, that had a geometric design painted on it. Well, that actually recapitulates one of our designs for one of our bottles that happens to be a design commonly seen throughout Rio de Janeiro, and that's just part of what we did. There is no signage there. That's artwork, in my opinion. I think the same could be said, if you can go back.
Arrows, side to side, bottom arrows. There you go.
Yeah, the other one. Yeah. To me, those sugarcane stocks with the cane knife, that's artwork, you know. So, you know, we could, in my opinion, without, potentially without conflicting with the ordinance at all, put, you know, a field of cane up there without trouble, because it's artwork rather than signage. So I think that there are so many ambiguities here, by my view, that we've done the best we can to comply, recognizing that we are nonetheless asking for a variance primarily on the issue of number of signs on the back. So that's.
Any questions?
Is, so these, the artwork actually, and the names here are actually product?
Yes.
Okay. What was your original concept with, for your signage to begin with? Just the name? Amberbev?
We had considered lots of different things. Bottles, in fact, fields of sugarcane, lots of different things. But, you know, ultimately, we are Amberbev, and we are Espirito Cachasa and Boteco Vodka.
So the, it is a retail and a tavern, and is it owned by two different entities, or the same entity with two different businesses?
Well, the building is owned by one entity.
Yes.
The business is owned by another. The one business is, does own everything that is occurring within that building, but as Steve suggested, you know, we have a warehousing and bottling operation, we have a distilling operation, and completely separate from that, occurring in a building that is, the front part of the building, that is specifically excluded from the distilled spirits plant license, you know, the front part of the building, that's where we would, as would virtually any distillery operation, have office space, and we're going to have a gift shop and tasting room there as well.
The front of this building is roughly 2,400 square feet, with the warehouse space being around 7,000, give or take. They're sequestered from one another by a series of doors and locks per regulations outlined by DSP permits, so they truly are separated, and it would be impossible for a person entering from the front to access the back without being, you know, given permission and escorted from one area to the other by somebody involved with the.
So they're outside, beside, the front and back?
Yes.
And do I understand you to say that one entity owns both businesses?
Yes.
But the front of the building is going to be tasting room, retail, basically?
Essentially. Yeah, essentially.
Not, I would say 50% of the front of the building.
But you also have a tasting room and a gift, you're going to have a gift shop and.
Correct.
Display area.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Precisely.
Right.
But there's not going to be one business on one end doing one thing and another business on the other side doing.
Well, I think that, you know, there is a DBA status. So I would say that the still at Amberbev, which will be the tasting area and the gift shop, would be Amberbev doing business as the still.
Okay.
That's how I would put it.
Anyway, you can overlay the product with the art?
How do you mean? You mean have them, like, overlap?
The cane and the Boteca, or Oteca? You dropped the B, is that correct?
Boteco. Boteco, right.
Okay, Boteco, I said Oteca, okay. I dropped the B. All right, is there any you can overlay the Boteco and the cane?
I could put it down in back.
So that, so that the Boteco vodka was in the foreground with the cane artwork in the background?
Yes.
Certainly something that we could consider. I think that's problematic if we were to apply that same approach to the, its, its counterpart on the, on the left side in that it gets, it would get a little, little muddied up.
I can address something, I guess, as a layperson here, not related to our commissioner right here. This is brushed aluminum product, and so again, I, I measured the signage both ways, kind of what you were describing, just, you know, if it was, we consider them all three big, two bigger signs and one, that's where I came up to, they came, and they helped me get there to 31%. I think the variance request seems big, but again, whether we count the artwork or not, let's just say we do, they're asking then for that percentage over the 5%. But I think it is interesting to mention, the 5% is an interesting number to me too, because again, the IBD district allows retail uses. So in a retail setting, or in HC, Highway Commercial Retail setting, you're going to get a lot more signage as far as if there's multiple tenants in there, and those signs can actually be 5%, 5%. So overall, the total number is going to be 5%, but you could end up seeing 15 signs across the building, possibly on two walls, based on the number of tenants. And it's not really related to doing business as or business entities, it's literally how many business suites we have across the front of this retail center. Use the, you know, Hibbett Sports on down through there, think of all the signage that are on that, that box, basically, as we look across the front of that building. So that, you would think into the future, the zoning ordinance ought to attempt to treat all retail and industrial kind of similar, and industry standard is typically more of a 10% number, and a, and then maybe a not-to-exceed cap. That's typically what you might see in other communities as, where ours is 64 or 5% with ever's greater, it's usually 10% or not to exceed 300 or something of that nature. But you can see how odd a scale this gets when you have a really big box, like let's say Lowe's, who's a single tenant, that only gets that 1%. On a building that's really big and across the street because there's 15 tenants, they, they get almost quadrupled amount of signage. So it, it's an odd, it's an odd situation here, and again, I appreciate the applicant attempting to clarify all that, that's why we measured it both ways or asked that it be measured both ways, so then you guys could decide whether the artwork counts or not. If it was zoned highway commercial, you get the corporate logos regardless of that. You get the wall signage, you get the size, and you get the corporate logos, and you get all kinds of pole signs based on your frontage.
How, how much pole signage are they eligible for?
They're allowed, I think, a single, that's a good point, I think a single wa, a single pole sign, and they're not doing any, let me jump to it real quick here. They get, that's wall signs, freestanding sign, well, it, it's an interesting standard, I guess I didn't read that detailed. They get one square foot for each linear foot of lot frontage not to exceed 100 square feet. Any business establishment whose lot frontage results in the sign being less than 64 gets 64. So, they're on the cul-de-sac, so we'd measure the frontage.
Oh, it's the frontage that you're measuring?
You'd measure the frontage, if it was 44 feet, they'd get 64. If it was 190 feet, they'd get 190, or not, they'd get 100.
One square foot per.
Linear foot, not to exceed 100, and if it's less than 100, less than 64, you get 64. So in this case, again, this is, this is where the rationale came, when we think about this from an aesthetic, could have had a wall sign on every side and a pole sign and had five signs on this piece of property. Instead, we've got two walls with signage in a more tasteful fashion, in my personal opinion, and in the, in a decorative building that, that's got some different facades. I, again, I think it was interesting, they pointed out, this, this is not artwork, and we don't measure artwork, that's not a sign to us, that's, that's a decorative building facade that, that's appreciative, and no, we would not count that unless there was some words conveyed on there or, or a corporate logo. So.
I guess I have a question for them.
Yes, sir.
Would you be okay with your variance, that if we said you could not put any signs on the other two buildings and you did not want a pole sign at any point?
Besides.
A pole sign. And you're not putting anything on the other two sides?
Yeah.
They're capping you at what they see on those.
Right. That this would be the most you could ever do.
Well, I think what I'd approach it on, I think I'd like to see it approached by front and back when discussed each, since they are two different sides. And how much are you, you got on the front exactly square on the front?
It's 4.5%.
So you've got, within your variance on the front?
It's just going from one to two.
Okay.
So there's really nothing on the front?
Nothing on the front, so that we're discussing even?
No.
Okay, the back, those are, in essence, artwork logos, and that's my understanding, is artwork slash logos for the product?
Trademark.
Trademark logos, like McDonald's, whatever.
Sure.
All right.
So we're only dealing with the three?
Yeah.
Signs?
I think the artwork's attractive, I'd like to see the, the verbiage reduced a little bit.
And I don't have a problem with the verbiage, I think it's attractive the way it looks. I think if you got much smaller, it would be out of proportion.
Yeah, those are two foot.
I think we can't underestimate the perspective issue.
Right.
The elevation and the distance from.
Right there.
So, 5% of a facade from 100 feet away is going to be much larger than that same, that same signage from 5.
Well, I think if you got much smaller, it would throw everything out of proportion, you know, for the size of the building.
We aren't, and our objective was never to, let's make this as big as possible. Our objective was, let's make this legible.
Did, did I, did I read that as being two foot for the letters?
27.
24 inches or something?
The tallest is 27.
The smallest is 27? The tallest is 27.
And I think the, the.
Roll it back.
Get you on the video, you guys might need to come. Sorry.
Oh, so the, the largest are 24, did you say 27, sorry?
Yes.
Yes, what, 24, 27?
I believe they're, I believe it's in the, I believe it's 27.
27, that's correct.
Is that what it is? Okay, I thought 24. All right. All right. Yeah, I think if they do this, sides perhaps zero in the.
And no pole sign.
Pole sign, zero.
I mean, it, what do you all think?
It's okay.
Any questions? Any questions, Jesse?
And you did say that the artwork was going to be copper and silver and, was it bronze?
Brushed, brushed copper and aluminum, so we're really dealing with just two materials, similar in nature in that they're both metallic, but cohesive in, in the sense that from an appearance or aesthetic perspective, I think that they, they will blend well together.
And they're going to be lit at night?
They'll be lit at night, yes.
Is that backlit or from a?
It'll be from the, precisely, from, from the ground.
Ground up, okay.
Projecting to the wall.
Jesse, do you have any questions?
I like what you said, but this is it.
We want that included in, in the motion then, that they could not add any signage at a later date. Okay.
So no McDonald's M?
No.
Sorry.
Can't let you go McDonald's.
That would be interesting. Anyone else have any questions? Any comments? So anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment or has a question? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the, with the additional stipulation of no additional signage on the location.
Based on the findings of fact, as in the staff report, with the addition that no additional signage should be added.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
That's what you meant to say, okay. Does that cover it all?
Might I add to those findings?
You sure can.
Okay. I suggest that we say the testimony presented and the reasons in the application justify the variance, and then after each of these little findings about adversely affect will not alter some kind of, something that says, for instance, it won't adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare because of the distance from the highway. It won't be a nuisance or alter the essential character because of design considerations given to the placement of the signs, and it won't be an unreasonable circum, circumvention because there will be two businesses occupying the building. I've got this written down and can provide it to.
That sounds good, and then add on that no additional signage can be?
With the condition.
Right.
None on the sides and the seat.
None on the sides and no pole sign.
No added poles.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Sir.
All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We'll give Donna a chance to come back.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
For after the meeting.
Okay.
We're going to be in more session then, so.
While we get on to new business, you just throw it out there to me if you want it in the session?
If they're operating a tavern, won't there, won't that trigger a parking question?
All, all that's been looked at already from the, they've done the site plan approval, planning commission, zoning permits.
They, they have anticipated.
All that's been reviewed already by our office.
Parking, all that is already taken care of.
Multiple applications that were sought to get us to this point, to, to the variance request. Yes, sir.
They're not asking for a variance for the number of parking spaces, so we didn't have to do that. Okay, second on the agenda. Walmart Real Estate Business Trust has applied for approval of a conditional use permit on attractive land containing approximately 21.446 acres located at 100 Walton Avenue. The property is zoned highway commercial.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Again, application was filed timely on September 27th, applicant you heard is Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, location 100 Sam Walton, current zoning highway commercial, what we just talked about. The property size 21.446 acres. You see on page one of your staff report, the property actually has frontage on Sam Walton, Papa Well, Brent, and Jane Trail. So again, there's the map on the screen, you see all those different roadways it touches, and we all know where Walmart's at. This is a very interesting application, and it's more just cleanup, housekeeping. Walmart has gone through a few approval processes already to basically do a minor expansion of this building. They've already gone to the planning commission and gotten approval for a site plan amendment. However, in their legal department, doing a lot of kind of due diligence, just housekeeping, zoning compliance-based stuff before they move forward with the building expansion, we found a little odd provision in the zoning ordinance that was added years later after Walmart was approved, that says we no longer build buildings in Danville, Boil County over 50,000 square foot in the HC district without first getting a conditional use permit. Obviously Walmart's on the ground, and you guys see the aerial behind you, almost 170,000 plus square foot approved under the PUD-style development years ago, amendments, additions, site plans came later after PUDs went away. Somewhere in the writing of this ordinance, I guess in 2004 or later, as you can see on page three of your staff report, and again, there's several sections referenced here. Section 572 tells us what we can do in the highway commercial, and it says we can do all kinds of commercial uses, including retail, business service, office, wholesaling, but only up to 50,000 square foot. And then we say what's permitted by condition in Article 573, which is going over 50,000. So if you want to build your building 55, you got to come get a CUP before you can go over 50. So somewhere along the way, we decided we're just not building big boxes in Boil County anymore, unless you're IBD or another district or several other districts, but in the highway commercial, 50,000's the cap. So in a sense, I guess what happened, when that was passed, it made a lot of these buildings non-conforming. Lowe's is across the street, shopping center across the street, just showed you a highway commercial building, cat a corner, anything over 50 right now, I guess, is, became non-conforming with this provision being added. So as we move into the future, we probably need to, again, we're going to need site plan approvals for buildings that, let's say, are 60,000 or 70, and then we need to get conditional use permits, and then we can do them in either order. Planning commission first, board of adjustments second, board of adjustments first, planning commission second. What Walmart's legal department wants to do, and gentlemen's here, this is the second trip from Memphis here from Walmart to come up here on this approval, again, they're only bumping out the building 5,077 square feet of a fairly large building, and that's already gone through the planning commission approval for site plan approval, is they realize we need a conditional use permit to bring us basically legal, and again, the building had been there several years, built under our standards, but with this provision, made it non-conforming because it, it's sitting on the ground over 50,000.
Mr. Hunter, do you have a date when the building was on site or perhaps?
We, we can talk, this is back in the late 90s.
Okay.
98, 96 was one approval, saw 98 in the file, there was multiple applications between 96 and I think 99, something like that. So it's been there quite a long time. Yes, sir. Well, non-conforming basically says it, it doesn't meet our standards anymore, and we'll talk about that in just a second, we're getting close to, I think, an issue we're going to get ready to address, and I think there's going to be some confusing, confusion on that, and I'll explain how this reads. So if we look at, again, page three of your staff report, I think lays all the stuff out in the zoning ordinance that we need to really think about. So there's 572, it says only 50, 573 says going over 50, we need a CUP. 611 deals with continuation of non-conforming structures, or as our commissioner pointed out, grandfather in, and what it says is the lawful use of the building or premises can continue. So you could argue, this is a premises, that's all the acreage, so even though the standard came in, it's a non-conforming structure, wall to wall to wall, but it's not non-conforming that Walmart's sitting on that 21-plus acres as a retail center of 180,000 square foot. It says that it can be the, a building or premise can be non-conforming and still be basically operating. But what Article 641 says, which is again, why the Walmart legal team and us, says 641 says if you're going to enlarge a non-conforming situation, that's increasing the, the space devoted to a non-conforming use. The use is not non-conforming, the structure is. It's a big difference. So 641 basically says you can't increase a non-conforming use. The use isn't changing, it's the same use, it's retail. We're not, we're not changing it to something else, we're not going in HC from retail to manufacturing, we're still retail. So 641 is relevant, but the lawyers thought, look, it still says it'd be nice for us just to get the CUP, we're over 50,000, let's voluntarily file an application so we can, we, we just, you know, everything's good for their legal department. In my opinion, this was an option if they wanted to file this, because when I read 641, I don't think the use is changing. It's clearly not. The building's getting 5,000 square foot bigger, and I don't think 641 says they can't do that. However, 7215 lays out, again, if we're going over 50,000, you get a CUP, the only standard we review is do they have adequate water and sewer, everything's already there. The next page is Article 39321, that again, says you guys have the ability to add conditions, as you know. Section 39322 says how we review CUPs, and again, there were no staff items in concern. But I, I think it really is going back to talking about this, this Article 641 and 611, is this building truly non-conforming? The building as a structure is, the cap is now 50, and they're now going up to, you know, again, 5,000 more, so they thought, look, we're, we are growing the footprint, let's get it in compliance, but 641, is the use changing? They are not really changing the use of the premises, in my opinion. So, and, you know, again, it was their, it was their application, their request, they've already gone through several reviews, and, and my opinion, it was up to them if they wanted to file it. This just buttons everything up for the legal department before they make their building expansion. And as you guys know, it's a 5,077 square foot addition to do a liquor store, spirits, they have to build that as separate space away from the, the retail center, you guys have seen those, so this is what Walmart is doing. They've already got those approvals from the planning commission to basically grow the site, got the site plan approval and the use. the site, got the site plan approval and the use, but, but this is the CUP simply because they're on the ground bigger than five thou, fifty thousand. It's interesting, when this ordinance revision was enacted, we made several probably buildings non-conforming in the community if they're zoned HC. It's also interesting that we are capping buildings in HC at fifty thousand, but yet industrial buildings in this same region are, are bigger. So as far as compatibility analysis of, let's just say, driving down the bypass, it, it seems odd. The goal is fifty thousand, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, and then there's hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. Not sure why the HC sort of got drilled down on in this cap fashion. Something we may want to look at, the planning commission may want to look at in the future. Obviously, there's retailers out there of this size and bigger, but I, I think, and this is just an outside observation, I think in the late nineties and early two thousands, it was kind of vogue for planners to be against big boxes, and you saw ordinances all over the country where, you know, they just thought, hey, big boxes aren't good things to have in your town, whether they be a Target, or a Lowe's, or a Walmart, or Super Kroger, whatever. And so a lot of communities put standards in saying, we want smaller boxes. And what happened as a effect of that around the country, people just came in and built four fifty thousand square foot buildings with breezeways, and that's how they went. And then you saw weird little shopping centers that were different. But, I mean, the goal, I think the goal over time was to make sure these big boxes were more attractive. Other communities then started to put standards in their books on how facades looked, or that they be brick, or whatnot. I think that's how down the road, other towns got, you know, pretty Walmarts, or pretty Krogers. But for a long time, it was, hey, let's just roll the cap down, and then we'll never see a Target come to our town. I, I think that's what happened across the country, from the planning side, and I've been a planner a long time, and I know I've got the literature, and at one point, we all hated big boxes, I guess. But they function in towns and their services, and they're there, and that aerial shows you one right across the street, same exact boat. So, interesting enough for our community, they're set back, and with the hill and sightlines, they don't feel too offensive to me as structures, personally, but other towns have taken different ways to get there. So I'm not sure why this is in the ordinance, it's something I hope we look at in the future. Walmart's here, if you guys want to talk to them about what they're doing, but this is all housekeeping for their legal department, to, to make sure everything's in compliance under our ordinance.
We'll have you come up in these four in case somebody has a question. State your name.
Keith Moore with Carlson Consulting, Steve Seabird presenting.
Do you swear affirm the statement you're about to make, true and correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have one question, is this going to be an entirely separate building, or will it be attached with a separate entrance?
It'll be attached with a separate entrance.
On the right or left-hand side, face of the building?
It's on the, the west side there, so I guess the right side you're facing the building.
And now it's going to, same composite, this block building with a, what's the sign?
It's, it'll match the same construction as what the existing store is.
The only thing you're going to be doing is taking up a few parking spaces.
Five thousand parking space, none?
That's right, it'll take up that side parking, some of it.
But you have more than enough to meet.
Yes, ma'am.
Requirements, so that's not an issue. I don't have any other questions, anyone else?
Question from Mr. Hunter. I get back to the next to the last page on the staff report, and this is my ignorance here. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Is, is there a, a question about stormwater? Do we, do we consider stormwater management?
Yeah, we, we consider everything. The planning commission, again, in this situation's already done a site plan review. Site plan is basically a full set of drawings, and by the way, I apologize, I should have brought the site plan in, it shows the square footage, shows the layout, but the planning commission's already had a hearing on the site plan expansion, showed the whole building, we looked at landscape, park, all the standards in the zoning ordinance have been addressed through the site plan review. The next step is a building permit and drainage, parking, everything's been reviewed from our office already.
My question, and so my question is, is stormwater, was stormwater?
Sure.
Included in that?
Sure.
And, okay.
Sure. It's requirement, and this, this made no impact for this basis, but the original Walmart plans are a full set of construction drawings. Our site plan review still requires pretty much a full set of drawings, which were turned in by Walmart, I, we've got a stack of plans, they're big ones, has every plan sheet in there. The parking was changed, it didn't impact the overall, we looked at parking, drainage, landscaping, everything that we do in site plan review, that's what the planning commission does, and that, that passed the planning commission last month. And again, minimal impact on all aspects, because it's such a small addition, and everything's already in compliance. Should have, should have showed the site plans, attractive plan, the building does give some facade relief on that corner, on the left corner, just bumps out, it all matches.
Step in or step out on it, on the side?
Steps out, steps out, and, and then the build, the travelway on the side will actually shift out and then curve around that, the bump out. The parking then shifts, the travelway shifts, all the parking's in compliance, but there'll be pull-in parking on kind of would be the west side of the building, so people can pull straight into the side, and the, and the travel lane just shifts off from where the building parking is now. See, I should have brought the plan sheet, planning commission looked at that last month. We were just talking about the CUP request today.
I have a question, and I don't know if you can even do this anymore, but it doesn't have drive, drive-through business, does it? A window, okay.
The lighting and the window openings, is just a front window?
Let me go get it. I can get it.
The, the windows aren't shown on our plans, it, it just has a small storefront at the, the front of it, and then lighting, we're maintaining the existing site lighting out there. And I, just to follow up on the stormwater question, we're basically switching parking light over the building, so that doesn't have any, you know, measurable impact one way or another to the amount of stormwater flow from the site.
Only five thousand square feet?
Yeah. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to, oh, gosh, I got to say it the right way.
Motion to approve.
So, so let me jump in here before you make that motion, just say, the chairman, in, in her wisdom, has asked that we prepare a motion up or down for you guys in a general form, that lets you plug in conditions and other things, so we've got that on the last page, we're not suggesting one way or the other, and then our attorney then can jump in here and help you with the findings in addition, but yeah, we've got these kind of canned up or down motions, that, that kind of fill in a blank style for you guys, so.
Henry, before they make the motion, do you want to fill in the, do you have any changes that you would want to add to make, you know?
I do. I have two additions. That we would add to this motion, that the board is empowered to grant this permit by section five point seven point three, and that the concerns listed in the conditional use section three point nine point three point two point two, one through eight, that's ingress, egress, parking, refuse, all that, that those concerns have been addressed by the site plan previously approved.
Okay. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
That your motion is?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I said.
Okay.
I think that's what I said.
We can get you a copy of this if you needed to, okay? Do I hear a second?
I, yes.
All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. That concludes, let's see, that concludes our hearing. A new business we have in our packet, schedule for our two thousand eighteen meetings, does everyone have that?
Yeah, do you got, I don't know if you guys do this every year, but the planning commission approved their two thousand eighteen schedule, I don't know if you guys formally approved this.
We never have.
Or the planning commission has done it in your behalf, in my opinion, the board of adjustments should approve their two thousand, and that's what we put in our bylaws, recently adopted. So this is your two thousand eighteen schedule. In the past, we've had this one piece of paper with both boards and all these filing deadlines, a little confusing, so now they're two separate documents. We're getting ready to go live with a brand new website, so there'll be a board of adjustments page, and your page will have your meeting schedule and the board members' names and whatnot. But everything's the same, same day of the month, filing deadline on the left, meeting date on the right, those are the twelve dates, and then we, we'd want your all's approval from this point forward on your meeting dates, if that's okay.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve these dates?
I approve the dates as presented for, for the board of adjustment meetings.
Motion to approve, second? All in favor? Any opposition? All right.